Everybody ready? Okay. If we will, if clerk will call this meeting or the clerk will call the roll?
Counselor Perry. Counselor Foster.
Present.
Counselor Oropesa.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Sanchez.
Counselor Moore. I believe she's abstained. Counselor Heldenbrand.
Present.
Counselor Corn.
Here.
Counselor Best.
Here.
Counselor Arnold.
Present.
Counselor Halverson.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. We have a quorum, we'll rise and have a pledge of allegiance by, uh, let's see, Counselor Foster and a prayer by, a silent prayer by Councilman, well, Councilman Perry, would you do us a prayer this morning?
Afternoon.
Afternoon, is that all right? Sorry. Well, it's pretty close. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. It's the day that you have made and we do rejoice and we're glad in it. Lord, we're thankful for yesterday you keeping our students safe and our folks safe here, Lord, as we saw concerns growing across the nation. Lord, we're thankful for those men and women who do protect us here in Roswell on a daily basis and put their life on the line for us. And Lord, we're blessed to have the best. And I pray you continue to bless and watch care over them and their families. And Lord, at this time, Lord, as we prepare to do the business for our city, I pray that you would give us wisdom, help us to see that we have different opinions, but at the same time that we can discuss these things and come to decisions that would be for the best of our community. And Lord, just continue to bless us as only you can, for we ask all these things in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, next. Next, we have item one for approval of the agenda.
Mister.
Counsel Lady Arnold.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for May 11th, 2023, for the regular city council meeting, striking number 27.
Second.
If we, we have a motion to approve the agenda, striking item 27 off the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Any comments? Okay, seeing none, clerk, and this would be approving the agenda with item 27, call, recall, struck, if the clerk would please call the roll. We have a motion by Counsel Arnold and a second by Counsel, Counsel Lady Halverson. Okay. If the clerk could call the roll.
Mayor, we're again doing the, the voice votes and the boxes as well. Counselor Perry.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Heldenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Corn.
Aye.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Okay. By a vote of nine in the affirmative and negative, the agenda has been approved with item 27 struck. And next, we go to item two, approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for May 11th, 2023, for the regular city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Lady Halverson seconds, have a motion by Counsel Lady Arnold, second by Counsel Lady Halverson. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just, just to ask the regular question, if anybody signed up to, to have any discussion concerning consent agenda items?
Let's see, we've got consent is 10 through 14. Uh, we have no one signed up for 10 through 14. Okay, so any further, seeing no further discussion? All those in favor signify for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, item two has been approved from the council. Okay. Okay, next, we go to the Airport Advisory Commission. Mr. Conklin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors and city staff. The Airport Advisory Commission did not have a quorum available for the April meeting. Uh, we were able to get the commission repopulated in April after the city council approval of committee members. My report tonight will incorporate some subjects over the previous 60 days, but is mostly from our last meeting on Tuesday, May the 9th. I would like to remind all city councilors and the public, if you haven't recently been to the terminal building, signage and branding is almost complete. The last major branding item to be accomplished is the large wall on the east side of the passenger boarding area before the passengers go into the secured boarding area. This wall will be covered with a state-of-the-art acrylic picture that will provide a selfie camera shot for incoming and outgoing passengers. This will be a one-of-a-kind UFO tourist-friendly exhibit that Roswell can be extremely proud of. The total cost of this exhibit was approximately $2,200 to the taxpayer, and it will hopefully be installed by the end of May. As a quick update for the council, for the city council, the drag races, the first drag races of the year were held April 7th and 8th out at the drag strip at the airport. There were dragsters there from Texas, Colorado, Oklahoma, and New Mexico. Approximately 200-plus people were in attendance, and the, the gross revenue was approximately $8,000. The people that operate the drag strip were extremely pleased with that, and again, they wanted to express their thanks to the city council for the lease that we recently got completed with them. The commission discussed an airfield lighting maintenance contract to bring the poor-conditioned slash outdated runway lighting and signage up to correct safety standards. Some of the lighting, control panels, wiring, were originally installed for the former Roswell Air Force Base. Some of this, we're talking in the 1940s and early 50s. We anticipate sending a request to legal committee for airfield lighting maintenance, an airfield lighting maintenance contract in June. The commission recommended approval of a five-year contract with AARC to monitor and report to the EPA regarding the storm water pollution prevention plan, as mandated by the EPA. Each time a recordable moisture event, not just a little spit of a rain, but a recordable event occurs at the air center, a report is required. A presentation is given to the commission reference the possible installation of automobile storage hangars at the air center. Additional information will be provided to the commission at our June meeting. This is a new concept. Several airports around the country have, had installed these, and this is at no cost to the city other than they will lease some land to this tenant who will lease the land and install the car garages. The new passenger parking lots project northwest and west of the terminal building was started this past Monday. Upon completion in late August this year, these two new parking lots will add about 153 regular paved parking spaces and 16 handicap spaces. Due to some pipeline components not being readily available, the water line to the southeast portion of the air center has had to extend its completion date from the end of March to the end of May, but we should be able to get that accomplished by the end of May. ILEA has just completed its first class since the State Department has reopened the facility. The leased chiller unit is operating satisfactorily for cooling the building, and so far, the facility is performing adequately. However, just to alert the council, due to the required repairs to the building, and even though the rent from the State Department is high, the air center will likely not show positive cash flow from that facility for two and a half to three years. The commission received an update on the video display in the baggage claim area at the terminal building. There are now video presentations that run in a loop from all communities and counties that originally assisted Roswell and Chavis County in obtaining airline service to and from Dallas to Roswell. This provides an opportunity to present information from these communities and counties to incoming passengers while they're waiting on their luggage. Jenna Landford provided an update on eight buildings and two tea hangars that are vacant, currently vacant at the air center. There is active potential for new tenants for two of the buildings. However, Building 611, which previously housed the State Health Department, remains vacant. This office building, which is in move-in-ready condition, contains 18,784 square feet. Since the Health Department moved out, the city has foregone approximately $507,000-plus in rent from their move-out in March of 2021 until this month. This office building is certainly not the most attractive building at the air center, but as I previously stated, it is in move-in-ready condition. There just aren't many tenants available that need almost 19,000 square feet of office space at the air center or anywhere else in Roswell, for that matter. The council will consider tonight acting on a lease with Badlands Saints for building number 734. This is a small metal building that has a restroom, but no heating or cooling. It will be used for club meetings and motorcycle repair, same thing they've used it for, for several years. We're continuing to work with Cavu Aerospace on completing leases on the properties that they currently use. Two of the leases have been mostly negotiated, and Cavu currently has 62 employees. They intend to hire 13 more in the near future due to increased demand from customers. They lease six buildings at the air center, so they're a major tenant out at the air center. The last item I want to discuss this evening is the current status of the joint powers agreement with Chavis County and the city reference the air center. We had hoped to complete this process this fall and get the JPA in place before the end of 2023. However, Chavis County has legitimate concerns about the costs of the security issues at the air center. Bill Williams, the Chavis County manager, has attended our last two AAC meetings. He and I have visited reference a small committee made up of city and county personnel to begin actual conversation to develop a framework for the JPA during the time that we are waiting to implement the joint powers agreement. When the security issues at the air center are more stabilized, we should be able to continue with our movement towards county and city agreement on the joint powers agreement. This completes my report, and I stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Conklin on the airport? Seeing that, Mr. Conklin, you were talking about a company on storage of cars?
There's a company that has approached the air center, and they will construct a, a building that will house with individual garage doors, a vehicle, not a huge vehicle, but you could probably put a duly in there. And they can put those just on gravel, and they will pay a land lease to the city, but they run all the expense for the building and maintaining and everything else. We're, we don't have as much information as we need to pass that, to make a decision, and either pass that on to legal or not, but we should get some more information at the June meeting.
Is this planned to put those vehicles close to the airport, towards the terminal? Or is it, or for storage for people who are gone out of town for maybe a month or something? Or is it for?
The, the ideal locations that we've talked about is that chat. The ideal locations that we've talked about is that chat area to the northeast of the terminal building where a lot of people park down. But when we get the new lots in, there'll be plenty of new paved lots, and then likely a place fairly close to the, the facility that, that the main contractor out at the air center utilizes. So yes, they would be used by people that fly in and out of here on an infrequent basis. Some people have talked about companies that fly in and out, and they have employees that come in from other areas, and they'd leave a vehicle there for the employee to use when they, when they come into Roswell.
So there would be about 50 slots?
Not that many. I, I don't think we know at this point. I would visualize starting out probably 10 to 15.
Okay. Thank you. And the, the other, the old health office now, is that all completely vacated by the firemen and the...
Fire department, fire department vacated the facility. They left it in good condition. They cleaned it up, and it's in move-in-ready condition.
And they are back in their station?
They're back in their station.
Thank you. Any further comments? Thank you, Mr. Kunkel.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation for the, for the city clerks. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Johnson was, was a city clerk for a number of years in Artesia and has a great history and is very well-known in the Clerks Association, affiliates of the municipal league.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for this opportunity to share a little information about the history of the municipal clerk. It is the oldest of public servants, along with the tax collector. And the Hebrew word maskir ha'ir translates as town or city reminder. Very often, early times, this person was known as a remembrancer because prior to writing, this person had to remember what was going on in the activities. In ancient Greece, they had a city secretary, and part of their job was to read official documents publicly. But this is my favorite. At the opening of a meeting, one of the first duties was to decree a curse upon anyone who should seek to deceive the people. So we may have to bring that back somewhere along the line. There's also a example in the Bible where, when St. Paul was in Ephesus, there was a riot that was caused. A couple of his followers were, were picked up and were threatened with some horrible things, and the county clerk said, wait a minute, we can't do this without going through proper procedures. So again, the clerk is involved in helping do all the right things to keep everything moving forward. The regency line in France actually came down through clerks as well. Now, in England, that's really where we get our history of clerks, and starting as early as 1272. The title clerk comes from the Latin word clericus, and it really meant when scholarship was there and writing was limited to the clergy, the clerk was the notary, the secretary, the accountant, and the recorder. So when the early colonists came to the United States, they set up their government very similar to what they had in England, and so they started the office of the clerks. This person kept the vital records for the community, deeds, meetings, the election of officers, et cetera. They also got such duties as sweeping the meeting house, ringing the bell, and paying the bounty for jays and blackbirds. So the title of town clerk or municipal clerk has considered ever since. Now, here in New Mexico, in municipal government, there are only three positions that you're required to have in a government, and one of those is a clerk. And so this is just the statute that allows that. And then we go to the actual statutory duties of the clerk, which is primarily, it goes along with what I just told you historically, the clerk is responsible to keep custody of the minutes, ordinances, and resolutions, attend the meetings of the governing body, record the proceedings, ordinances, and resolutions, and upon request furnish municipal records. So statutorily, those are the duties. And this is just an interesting quote from one of the secretaries that governed in 1965, that really the duty of the municipal clerk is to transmit the actions of the council of the governing body to the people. So you can also have a clerk in smaller communities, they'll combine it with that of treasurer, and so that is also in statute that allows that. Besides that, there are myriad other duties that that office can hold, depending on how large or small your municipality is. Usually, the smaller the municipality, the more hats the clerk ends up wearing. But in all cases, very often, this is the place where people come, when they're not sure where to start, they start with the clerk's office. Now, we've been fortunate in New Mexico that we've had a subsection with the league for over 60 years. We're the oldest subsection, and our whole purpose is education and to help clerks be the best that they can be in their, in their particular field. So we've done things such as developing a clerk's handbook, and we help coordinate the annual Clerk's Institute and Academy, which is an intense learning opportunity for clerks. One of the things we do is, through this training, is we encourage the certification. The International Institute Municipal Clerks offers two levels of certification, the certified municipal clerk and then a master municipal clerk designation. And so we work with our clerks here in New Mexico, helping them get their education, helping them strive for that designation. And as a result, we currently have 41 CMCs and 11 MMCs here in the state. And of those 11, that includes five of us who are retired, but we're still somewhat So in closing, I just want to leave you with this little quote, and I'm going to read it just because I think it has such a great meaning. No other office in municipal service has so many contracts. It serves the mayor, the city council, the city manager, when there is one, and all the administrative departments without exception. All of them call upon it almost daily for some service or information. Its work is not spectacular, but it demands versatility, alertness, accuracy, and no end of patience. The public does not realize how many loose ends of city administration this office pulls together. Now, what's interesting about that quote, that was written in 1934 by a professor who wrote a publication about local government administration, and 80 years, it's still basically good. So we are celebrating Municipal Clerks Week, recognizing the work of clerks worldwide for what they do, and so I would just like to thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit of information about the history of the municipal clerks, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to stand for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We do have a proclamation. If we could have our city clerk read, if you would, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. The proclamation states that whereas the office of the professional city clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government exists throughout the world, being the oldest among public servants, and whereas professional clerks provide the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. Professional clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality remaining equal service to all, and whereas the professional city clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas the professional city clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of their office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of the professional city clerks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on approval of that? Did you say yes? No? Okay. You know, I might, I might point out, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for, for coming, and I know your long history. It was nice to hear about Ernestine Evans, who was a longtime Secretary of State and had, she, I mean, she was involved in Secretary of State duties and clerk duties for 50 years, probably. She was a wonderful lady and a very nice lady, and thank you very much. And it's nice to know that our, our deputy clerk and our clerk are both working towards their accreditation with the municipal league and their accreditation as clerks, which is nice because that means is, if they are going to be certified in this and where the public will be guaranteed that they have accurate documentations by which reflect the actions of their government. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Would you mind stepping down if they want to take a picture?
Next, we have a proclamation for Colette. For older Americans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very pleased to be able to read this proclamation about May being Older Americans' Month. I have with me Brooke Stevens. She is our vice chair for the Commission on Aging. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Roswell includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas Older Americans' Month recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age, and whereas older Americans thank the Roswell Commission on Aging for its work to support local older adults and also thanks local organizations that serve older adults and offer them the opportunity to participate in recreational and other activities. Among these organizations are the City of Roswell Recreation Department, the local Chavez County Joy Center, and the Senior Circle." Now, therefore, Timothy Z. Jennings, Mayor of the City of Roswell, does hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans' Month. He urges every resident to celebrate and honor our older citizens, recognize their importance to our community, and strive to inspire them and assist them in pushing back traditional boundaries. Okay, Ms. Stevens, I would like to present this proclamation for May being Older Americans' Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public participation, and these will be, we have people signed up for Items 21 and 19. We have five people that have signed up for that, and this, so this will be for the non-agenda items. And first, please, if they could, oh, is there none? Okay, we have six for Item 21. And so we have Tori Hornick, if you'd like to come speak.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tori Hornick, and I just speak now, I just start talking, correct? Okay, cool. I'm here today to keep our skate parks and children relevant in discussion here at the city council meetings, along with other members of our skate community today sitting over there by my side. As some of you may or may not know, I've been discussing with our Parks and Recreation Department about the possibility of renovating our skate park in order to have more local events held there. Skater parents and everyone involved is excited about the potential to create a positive space that will benefit the local community, children, and tourism. We were exploring different options and funding sources to make this happen. Our end goal is to create a safe and modern skate park that our city can be proud of. Renovating the skate park and having a local events would be an awesome, up-to-date, positive addition to our city's recreational activities. Fixing our parks would not only provide a safe and fun place for skateboarders, roller skaters, and BMX riders, but also attract tourists interested in these sports. This will increase revenue for local businesses, restaurants, and hotels. The renovations and events would also give our youth a positive outlet for their energy and creativity. We, the skate community and parents, look forward to the progression and future events at our skate park around town. Thank you all for your time, and if you guys would like to ask questions, I'm here for that as well.
Okay. If you don't mind, if we'll wait when we, after all three, since we're all talking on the skate park, we can ask questions when we all get through.
Okay.
Kind of stay close.
Perfect.
Thank you. Next, we have Geneva Martinez.
Geneva, I think less, so I think it's going to be Rowan.
Okay, just Rowan, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I just wanted to remind everybody there's a three-minute limit to speak. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Rowan Allen. I'm 24 years old, born and raised in Roswell, New Mexico. The reason I'm here today is just kind of to bring some awareness about the current condition slash need for renovation for our skate park. Our skate, I've been going to the skate park since I was a little kid, and it kind of disappoints me that there hasn't been too much progression or even regular maintenance on the skate park. The skate park was really good when it was created about like 20 years ago, but the, like, standards have changed, and I think it could be really beneficial not only to the city but to like the youth and upcoming people since like skateboarding is becoming so... the youth and upcoming people since like skateboarding is becoming such a big industry to invest into the youth and stuff, so that's pretty much it.
Pretty much it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of Tori or Rowan on the skate park?
You'll come back up if there are.
That's fine, if there are any questions, that's fine. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you guys have any? No? Okay.
You know, I would just like to say one thing is that I would encourage you all to get together and design and show the city, make a design about, you know, from different skate parks around, what you would like to see included in the skate park. When I was in the legislature, we had the students in Artesia design their skate park, and we got some appropriations from the legislature to put it in.
That would be awesome.
And if you've been to Artesia, it was very successful and a very well-done park.
It's a beautiful park.
And it really puts ours to shame, and I'm just saying, the kids did it.
Yes.
They did all of it.
A hundred percent.
And if you all will do that and make, come up with your plans together about what you want to make our skate park better, and where you got your ideas from, so that then, when someone comes along to redesign the skate park, they can say, oh, it's like the one in Port Talon.
They can reference it, correct?
And reference it back and forth about, and you can come up with sizes, what you need, some of those things, and like, you know, we have enough area over there to have, you might have a place to have, you know, bicycle jumps or something.
A hundred percent, and most definitely, we will definitely do that.
And so, if you'll do that and then, and work with Mr. Burris and the parks about where we are and where we go, and work with your area legislators about finding you money to put in there.
Of course.
Because there are a lot of kids that use this park.
There really is. Last night I was there, and we even had a church group out there. There was about 15 people within just an hour, and they were just random people, and this wasn't even including the church group. They all utilize it, and they were even asking like, where's the love for the skate park? I said, we're trying to get it back there, and we're going to bring it. And so that's what, that's our goal, is just to, you know, show some love to it, and we're going to get there, and we're going to do what you guys said.
Okay, hold on, we have one question. Council Lady Arnold.
Actually, it's more of a statement. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have met Ms. Tori and Mr. Burris, and we've kind of started talking about some ideas. Mr. Burris has been very good about kind of conveying a plan of how he can utilize some of the things he has to make, to begin to improve the park. We've also been talking about events, and we have some form of a timeline, so there has been some forward motion, and I'm so glad to see you out, and thank both of you for coming out and speaking. I think this is a very important project that we need to be taking on.
Awesome, and I agree too, and thank you guys all for your time.
We got Council Lady Halverson also.
So somebody on the go-to meeting mentioned that the Navajo Nation just dedicated a new state park that Tony Hawk helped with, so maybe you can get Tony Hawk.
He did, and we have actually, I actually have been in contact with, there's a lady named Gavolina, and I've been talking to her, and she works for that foundation. And so that is, that's something new that I haven't, that was new. So yes, there is, there's a lot of positive things that we could be doing, and there's a lot of foundations that are willing to help, they just want the city to back it as well. So awesome, and I'm good to sit now? Perfect.
I've never done this before, obviously.
Thank you, and when you see Ms. Martinez, please tell her to tell Matt to call Zach, he's got some ideas about him too.
Okay, awesome.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all for taking the time to come. Okay, next, we've had our public participation, now we go to public hearings. So we have item six. To hold a public hearing, to consider adopting ordinance number 23-06, amending the Municipal Campaign Finance Code. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I propose that we hold a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance 23-06, amending the Municipal Campaign Finance Code.
Motion by?
Second.
Council Hildebrand, seconded by Council Lady Halverson, or excuse me, Arnold. Is there any further discussion? To hold a public hearing. Councilman, excuse me, I have a motion, a second. Mr. Intima.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. Just to give you the greatest hits, we did discuss this last month. So this provides, this amendment will provide for regular contributions, pardon me, regular reports from candidates from August through December of election years, as well as political committees, which is roughly defined as two or more people doing anything to influence the election. Candidates, political committees, and individuals may attribute, must attribute to any campaign ad, and elected officials retain an annual reporting requirement, which can be as simple as just a piece of paper saying, I got nothing, or something more elaborative, the elected official is prolific at fundraising or expenditures. I did meet with Councilor Perry, and I'm very grateful because he had some suggestions that clarified and improved this legislation. It does not change the substance of it, in my opinion, but it does make it a lot more reader-friendly. And I would, if there's a friendly counselor to this, I would read these and ask that they be moved as amendments to this, and I can give you the changes right now.
Mr. Intima, if she has a copy of them, she's going to pass those out to everybody's able to see them.
So, in all instances, the verbiage ballot item would be removed and replaced with the verbiage ballot question. This is more in form with common parlance. This would affect Sections 12-3, definitions for contributions, election, and expenditures. Similarly, or that's the change there, in Section 12-4, the word division would be replaced with the word article. That's consistent with Roswell's, the Roswell Code's formulas. Section 12-6, the errata from A would be corrected in paragraph, subparaphrase A would be corrected to one. In Section 12-7, the errata would be replaced with the word treasurer's. In Section 12-7, again, we would, in subparagraphs B, in subparagraph B, the word days will be struck, so it would just be the first of, and then it would read the month. In Section 12-17, Paragraph D would be changed to read as follows, "On the first of July on non-election years, reports shall be filed by an elected officer." The change there is that on, the prepositional phrase, "on the first of July on non-election years," was at the back of that sentence. Moving it to the front clarifies what it modifies. Similarly, Subparagraph E in Section 12-7 would be amended to read, "On the first day of July on non-election years, reports shall be filed by any political committee that has received contributions or made expenditures." And 12-8, and this is, for those of you following along, page 18 of the packet, subsection D, line four, we would be striking the word "they" as errata.
Yes, Councilman.
If I may, also, the Sections 12-3 with Paragraph 3, Paragraph 4, and Paragraph 5 with those changes as well. And in those instances, those clarifications are just grammar. With the addition of those, I would make the motion that we amend proposed ordinance 23-06 to include all the proposed changes as lined out here, as provided.
Councilman Perry has a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Perry, seconded by Council Lady Arnold. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
I have a vote of eight in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion has passed to include the changes. Thank you, Councilman Perry. Your English teacher will be proud of you. Any further discussions on the motion to hold a public hearing on adopting the Municipal Campaign Finance Code? Seeing none? Yes? We are asking for the public hearing. That will be held at a different date? It'll be right now? Oh, okay. Okay, or is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak on the proposed changes to item six, ordinance 23-06? Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak to that item? Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak to that item? Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak to that item? Seeing none, members, do any of the members care to address this public hearing? Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a couple, but the main question I have is on, well, it's between, with all these strikeouts, trying to figure out which one is what. 12-7, Section 12-7F, says, "Each item eyes report listing all contributions shall include the names and addresses of all persons whose total contributions to the candidate at any time during the court, or political committee, at any time during the course of the campaign, then we have a strikeout." "The list shall also include contributions made by the candidate in any amount." Well, to me, first of all, that sentence doesn't make sense because we've stricken, it did make sense when there was an amount there, but now it doesn't. But then down here, that tells me if anybody contributes, you have to have a name and address. But then down here, on Section 8C, anonymous contributions are limited. Well, wait a second, if we have to have a name and address for every contribution, then you can't have anonymous contributions. So I don't, this is contradicting.
Counselor, or excuse me, Attorney Hess.
Yes, Counselor Foster, thank you. Yes, so in legislative writing, when there is an exclusion later on, that's presumed to override the previous statement. So similarly, if you were to look at campaign limits, A and B, limit per, a number per individual, but subsection D in that Section 12.8 says that there is in fact no limit for individuals that are contributing to their own campaigns.
That's not my statement. Up here, it says, we have to have a name and address of all persons who contribute, and then down here, it says there's anonymous contributions. So you can't have both.
The subsection 12.8, sorry, 12-8 Charlie modifies the subparagraph F above it.
That makes no sense to me to have it still in the document. And it's ambiguous, the ambiguity leads to the point where then it gets to a point of how do we enforce, and at what point do we enforce? So what candidate's going to get to have anonymous, and what candidate's not going to get to have anonymous contributions? And that, there's an ambiguity there, because it's in our ordinance that you can't have. And just because, if we're writing this, it should be taken out, but even F doesn't make sense grammatically with what was taken out. So that's the other portion I have. And also, you know, I just don't see why, I know we're changing some things because we need to since we've changed the dates of our election, but we've gotten to the point here where it looks like what you're trying to do is just scare off anybody who wants to run, because we've written this, and then we've crossed out so much, that it's, to me, it's very ambiguous. And I don't think this is how you write ordinances or write laws. So I say we, well, I'm going to vote no for this. I yield.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any further discussion for any of the councils? Seeing none, well, clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
No.
Counselor Orpeza?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
Counselor Heldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
No.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two.
Okay, thank you. So that's item six. Next, we go to item seven, and this is ordinance 23-07, building and planning, building and planning fees, to hold a public hearing to consider the proposed adoption of ordinance 23-07, an ordinance to amend the Roswell City Code relating to fees in Chapters 6, 22, and Chapters 16. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I propose that we hold a public hearing to approve the adoption of the proposed ordinance 23-07, an ordinance to amend the Roswell City Code relating to fees in Chapters 6, 22, and 16.
We have a motion by Council, and Hildebrand, seconded by Council Lady Arnold, republic hearing. Counsel, excuse me, Attorney Intima.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll be brief again, because you're going to get sick of me if you aren't already. Residential contributions under this law would be, sorry, residential construction, building permits, inspection fees, and other charges would be made a dollar for the next calendar year, once this takes effect, if the council chooses to pass this. This would, there would be a one-year sunset provision, as it's currently written, but that is amendable, and people may purchase permits or inspections in advance and use them up to a year after the sunset provision. So there's a two-year provision there. Now, I was talking with Meredith, who's not here tonight, and we couldn't figure out why a guidance document about fees didn't compute in the same way for subdivisions and regular home builders, who aren't, who have already had their subdivision paid for. And it turns out, in the Parks Code, there is a linear, two-foot linear rate that had not been included in this. This does not, yeah, it was in the Parks Code, I have no idea why it's there, but in any case, we found it, we've been able to remedy. So I would ask if the council, if the goal is to make everything flat for anybody in a subdivision or a non-subdivision, that we would amend the ordinance in Section 6-1, subsection 1, and then make subsection G, sub-subsection G, to put Section 17-1 Alpha. Alpha on the list of fees. And that would in fact make every fee down to one dollar that we can find in the codebook.
Any questions? Council Lady Halverson?
Are we expect, is the city expected to lose money by lowering the fees?
So the biggest loss to the city would be through water metering. That is anywhere from a thousand, two thousand dollars. We only had 25 applications last year. We spoke with, said it was about, would be about $50,000 in loss to the water system, but assuming a $200 per month check, bill, that makes itself up rather quickly.
So is the purpose of this, try to get more houses built here?
Yeah. The idea here is we're, we are making Roswell the cheapest place to have your city permitting done in the state of New Mexico, bar none.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason this is in the park fund is because it goes towards development and also refurbishing of our parks, and that's why that part is there. I would ask our Parks Director to let us know, can we take that hit in our Parks Fund?
Mayor, councilors, to answer your question, obviously, things are pretty tight right now. We are kind of looking at those accounts to maintain some of the equipment that's kind of older. You know, we're not using that for new construction, but we do have some new guys that are trained to do the inspections, and we'll be taking some parks out, some playground equipment out, that, those funds will be used for that, but we can pretty much overcome anything, I guess, if we need be.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why I would probably stand for that not to be, because replacing our equipment is fairly expensive. What does the equipment for, say, a park generally cost?
Fifty to a hundred grand.
So, and how much do we have in this fund right now, do you know?
A little over 200,000.
And so, right now, we could probably replace, what, two to three park?
Depending on the size, if it's a, if it's a, along the river area, it's probably 100,000, somewhere around in there. City parks, they're not city, but neighborhood parks, complete, brand-new, about 80.
All right. And would these funds also be funds that we could have used for a skate park?
If we come up with those designs and the state doesn't help us with any funding, sure.
So that's why I would move not to, I mean, we're cutting, our budget's tight, we're saying lots of things, but this is the one thing that funds our parks' equipment, so, yeah, I don't, I would not move to add this to the list of the fees that we take away.
Well, we do, when we have more, more houses, we build more parks, so we do have 685 acres. Per capita, we're pretty good, so we're doing okay right now.
But with more park, more houses, they want more parks and more upkeep. So, all right, I yield.
Any further questions, Mr. Burris, before you leave? Did we not, in the last subdivision that we had before us with the 900 houses, did we leave this $2 in, or do we take that out of that, of that fee?
I'm not aware of that answer. I think Lewis might be able to answer that one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To answer your question, those are fees that are assessed when they get the building permit? So no building permit, we're taking out on those 800 homes? So the answer is zero.
So they, they wouldn't have gotten any, until somebody built a permit?
That is correct.
So this fee will leave, and this amendment takes this $2 fee totally out, or it takes it to a dollar? Takes it out?
It makes it $1 in total.
$1 in total for all the?
Per, per unit.
Per, per?
Per house.
Per house. Thank you. Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm indifferent, but the fact of the matter is, I'm indifferent, different to taking it out or leaving it in, but at $2, average lot size of new homes in this town in this community are $2, 60-foot, that's $120. 50 new homes built, $6,000. It's not a big deal. So I'm okay leaving, I'm okay not the amendment whichever way, but I just want to point out, it's not an overriding factor to anything, except it does put six, possibly $6,000 back towards equipment, so I would not be in favor of changing this. I see my time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so, so the amendment suggested, is there any public participation for item seven? Is there any public participation for item seven? Any public participation for item seven? Okay, seeing none, so I guess the first we would have to do is vote on, do we have a motion to accept the Second Amendment, or is that already in?
There, there needs to be a motion for that, unless somebody moved to vote in that case.
Does anyone care to make a motion to add the amendment to section 17-1A to the list of fees excluded? Does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move with delete the $2 per foot lot subdivision for the City Court.
We have a motion by Councilman Corn. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Councilman Corn, a second by Councilman Orpressa. Any further discussion? If clerk would call the roll.
Councilor Perry?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
No.
Councilor Orpeza?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Hildebrand?
No.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
Councilor Best?
No.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to three.
Okay, so we have an amended, amended item on 23-07. Is there any further discussion? Is there any public participation on anything else on item 23-07? As amended. Is there any further public participation? Seeing none, we're on item 23-07. We have, as amended, we have councilman made, on a motion made by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Council Lady Arnold. If the clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Perry?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Orpeza?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
Councilor Best?
Yes.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
I have a vote of nine in the affirmative and none in the negative. Item 23, as amended, has duly, item 23-07, item seven on today's counter, as amended, has been duly passed. Okay, next, we have to hold a public hearing and a vote on item eight, which is a restaurant and beer license for M&amp;N, M&amp;N LLC, doing business as Garibaldi's, located at 2019 South Main, Roswell. I believe that's the Jalisco's restaurant, no, restaurant? Oh, no, is that, that's on down at the, on Poe, right? That's on Poe. Garibaldi's is the new restaurant across from the Donut Shop on Poe. Yeah, okay. Okay, we have, Councilman, or, Mr. Intima, would you care to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's been a little bit of time since you guys have done liquor licenses, so here's the, this is a public hearing, so any speaker ought to be sworn in. The governing body has the option to approve or disapprove under state law. However, the presumption is towards approval. Generally, there are three conditions that must be met, or one of three, there's one of three ways the council could disapprove of this license. The first would be the proposed location is within an area where the sale of alcoholic beverages prohibited. Within your packet, you will see, beginning on page 26 of the agenda, a certified letter from the state of New Mexico. This includes information showing that the establishment is not within a prohibited area under state law. Part two is the issuance or transfer would be in violation of zoning or other ordinance. Also contained in your packet, you will see that there is a zoning certification letter and that this restaurant is C2, which is appropriate zoning for liquor sales. The final remaining part, which is what the public hearing would be really looking at, is if the issuance or transfer of a liquor license, or sales permission, would be detrimental to the public health, safety, or morals of the residents upon, residents of the local option district, we're a local option district in Roswell. So if the council makes findings based on testimony at the public hearing that is detrimental to public health, safety, or morals, a recommendation to deny may be sent to Santa Fe. Otherwise, the presumption is granting the license. Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a comment real quick?
Yes, Councilman Foster?
Our slide that's up here is wrong. The location isn't 343 East Poe, it's 2019 South Main, correct?
That's correct.
That is their, that is somebody's house.
343 is supposed to mainly, what it says in the actual application. This restaurant used to be Jox. It was another organization, might even have been, it was another organization called Red Man Club one time. It was, it's been a number of restaurants that served alcohol in there a number of times, and this is on the corner of Poe. It would be on the northeast corner of Poe and South Main. So, traded, about across the street from Catalinas. Okay, so with it, so we need a motion, do we, Council?
Yep. Mr. Chair? I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing and vote on a restaurant, A Beer and Wine Liquor for M&amp;N LLC, DBA Garibaldi, located at 2019 South Main Street, Roswell, New Mexico, 88203. Second.
We have a motion by Council Lady Arnold and a second by Council Lady Halverson.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Just, just a point of order, we're not hold, we're not, the vote can't be to hold a public hearing and consider, the vote needs to be in favor of the, of the motion on the table. Am I correct, Mr. Intima?
Yes, Councilor Perry, Mr. Mayor, it would be, the motion, Madam Protam would be to approve the license, and then we hold a public hearing to gather evidence, and then we vote on the motion. So I, I would recommend, make a motion to approve the license for Garibaldi.
So you, you're changing your motion to approve the license?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to change the motion to make a, make a motion to approve licensing for, and vote, well, now I'm all mixed up, on a restaurant, A Beer and Wine Liquor for M&amp;N LLC, DBA Garibaldi, located at 2019 South Main Street, Roswell, New Mexico. Second.
Okay, now we have a proper motion and a second, the Council Lady Halverson. Okay, now, anyone who is, if I could, before we start in the public hearing on items eight and nine, both those items, anyone who would like to speak in those, if they would could please come and stand up, and so we can have them sworn in on a, on testimony on this, we have to have you sworn in, and if, if you don't come up and get sworn in, you cannot speak for or against this, is my understanding?
So, if I may, if anybody's speaking on item eight and nine, will you please stand?
Call if you can come up and so we can swear you in, please. And please indicate which item you're, on anybody on item eight? Are you on item eight? Vote, you're on nine? Okay. Item eight, yes, sir?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor.
We can swear you both in at the same time.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Ms. Mayor.
You're on item eight?
Yes, sir. City council members and city staff, my name's Mr. Eloy Miranda, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Miguel at Norelia Science regarding Garibaldi. And so, purpose of me coming up here is to let you know that they can speak pretty good English, but they asked me to come and represent them on, on their behalf. That's basically what I wanted to say.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
You, is that all?
That's it for now.
Do you want to say this?
Unless you have questions for me.
No, and, man, you've been sworn in, you're for item nine? Okay, if you'll wait, we'll go ahead now that he's been here. And we'll go ahead, we'll come to item nine next, and we won't have to swear anybody in. Okay, are you basically here to answer questions for anybody on item eight? That's, so, that's where we are. Okay, we have a motion and a second by Council, motion by Council Lady Arnold, second by Council Lady Halverson. All those, are there any questions from members of the, of the council on item, item eight, on, for the liquor license for Garibaldi? Are there any questions? Seeing none? Then I believe we don't have any questions to ask you, so, so, okay, then, we have a motion, seeing there's no further debate, we have a motion by Council Lady Arnold and a second by Council Lady Halverson to approve the liquor license for Garibaldi at 21, 2019 South Main Street in Roswell. If the clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Perry?
No.
Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Orpeza?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Hildebrand?
Yes.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
Councilor Best?
Yes.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
I have a vote of eight, in the affirmative, one in the negative. Item eight, the council has approved the liquor license to Garibaldi at 21, or, excuse me, 2019 South Main. Okay, next, we go to item nine. Council Lady Arnold.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Councilman Perry, for that correction. I believe I have the same thing on number nine. I'd like to make a motion to approve lines, licensing for restaurant B Beer, Wine, and Spirits for Taqueria Jalisco, located at 1622 South Main Street, Roswell, New Mexico, 88203. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Lady Arnold and a second by Council, Council Lady Halverson to approve beer, wine, and spirits license for Taqueria Jalisco at 1622 South Main Street, which long, long time ago was the Burger King. at 1622 South Main Street, which long, long time ago was the Burger King. Am I right? Yes, ma'am, would you care to come up and make a statement?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Anna Martin, and I'm an attorney for, uh, Taqueria Jalisco. Um, so I'm representing the owners, um, Juan Boitas and, and Maria Hernandez. As, um, the city knows, they've operated this location with a beer and wine license only, um, responsibly as well. Um, and so at this point, their, their application is to convert to, uh, the license B so that they can serve spirits, and so that is what they're requesting today. And I'm welcome, any questions?
Are there, are there any questions of Ms. Martin concerning the liquor license to, uh, Taqueria Jalisco? Seeing none? Are there any further questions of any, any members of the council on, on, on this request to approve the, uh, Taqueri, Taqueria Jalisco to have a liquor license? This, uh, this is a bad one. Seeing, seeing none on a motion by Council Lady Arnold and a second by Council Lady Halverson, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Perry?
No.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Uh, item eight. Next, we have, oh, these are items, the, uh, we have the items for consent. So we've already done, we've approved the consent items? When we approved the minutes, so we go on now to item, pardon? Do we have a dozen minutes? Okay. If the, they have a motion to approve the minute, the minute? Is that right? No, we have?
The minutes were approved.
We've already approved the minutes, so these are all done.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I actually had to do those separately, that's why I was confused. But they were considered part of the agenda.
Of the consent agenda, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, that one's done. So next we have, uh?
Item eighteen.
Item eighteen. Uh, okay, item eighteen is to consider the resolution 23-20 to set fees charged at, for the resolution at the convention center. Uh, Councilman Orpressa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, based on the recommendation of the General Services Committee, I move for adoption of resolution 23-30, which if adopted, it will set fees at the Roswell Convention Center.
Yep.
Second.
That was motion by Councilman Orpressa, second by Council Lady Halverson, uh, for res, to approve resolution 23-20. Okay, next we have, Mr. Orpressa, is Mr. Matthews still here? He, I believe, council, uh, city manager, Mr.?
Cole.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Jennings, uh, members of the council. Uh, Mr. Matthews wasn't feeling well, so I'm gonna step in and, and go through his presentation. Uh, resolution 23-20 considers the adoption to set fees charged at the Roswell Convention Center. Uh, currently, the convention center carries a large list of fees for users to choose from when renting the space. Over the last year, the administration has received many calls with concerns from event organizers about fees and services provided. Uh, staff has had a difficult time maintaining the staff of servers, and many times has had to rely on other departments to serve in this capacity. Currently, we are seeking to reduce rates and consolidate a very large, long list of charges to simplify the rental rate for the space. Uh, remove in-house food service, allow renters to select and negotiate with local caterers, um, allow a 50% discount to Chavas County Nonprofits, or 501(c)(3) organizations, allow local, state, federal agencies the use of the facility if available at no charge, and continue bar service for events under 200 people, and simplify our ability to rent and utilize the facility. Locally, we have asked department heads with the city, uh, to poll their different statewide organizations and groups to see if they have an interest in hosting events locally. To date, six municipal groups have expressed interest in holding their events here, uh, with 300 attendees staying in our hotels and motels for a week at a time. Uh, we will be reaching out to other governmental agencies wishing to host association meetings. Uh, we are asking the council to consider these new fees, uh, be charged at the convention center. And the whole idea is to generate lodgers' tax receipts, uh, to fill that space and, and generate those tax receipts, um, and have these venues come to Roswell, and it's, it's looking pretty promising thus far.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cole. We have, on the list of questions we have, we have Councilman Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I met with Mr. Cole, Mr. Inte, and some others today concerning, uh, just a few things here. Um, one of them being on the resolution 23-20 and the meeting room rental pricing, A through D is 300, East Exhibit, 750, West Exhibit, all these numbers. And I, I asked a question, which I think we all know what the answer is. Is this per day, per hour, per event? And of course, whoever, whoever wants to speak to that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Perry, thank you. Uh, so this would be per day, is the idea, per day.
And I don't think that necess, well, I, I'd like that added to that somehow. I don't, I, it's put together very nicely, but somewhere in there, and needs to make sure, uh, maybe an asterisk after each one of those might be a good way of doing it, and then put a, or, uh, an asterisk underneath the 10%, due to say these prices are per day.
Yes, sir.
So I, I, I'll make a motion to amend here in a moment, but that's one question. The other question that I had was for the pre-function on the add-ons, this is $150. What, what is that pre-function $150 for? And, and I'm, I'm gonna really exaggerate it out here, but, um, if I'm holding an event, uh, could I have a pre-event the night before and have the entire facility for $150? Of course, I don't think that's what we're looking to do. So if we could have some clarification on that.
Yes, sir, and that is, that is not the intent, uh, in, in your example, um, for the $150.
So, uh, Mr. Inte, do you have any suggestions on maybe what we need to put in there for clarification?
Counselor Perry, I unfortunately did not have a chance to speak to Mr. Matthews about that item.
Okay.
But I do have an answer for you on your next question.
Okay. Glad we know where we're going. So I, uh, my last question, I think, is with the local 501(c)(3), uh, receiving the 50% off on rental fees. I think I understand what's happening here. After speaking with Mr. Cole late this afternoon, I understand that we really need that to be 501(c)(3)'s and (4)'s. Is that, is that correct? Or, or Mr. Inte, but do you have a better, uh, answer that we need? And what I mean by that, councilors, is, um, Mr. Mayor and councilors, is 501(c)(3)'s is gonna be specific, uh, but, but some of the events that I think that you're wanting to be able to hold, like, for instance, and I, I've heard mentioned several times, the Kiwanis has historically had a big, um, pancake breakfast. They are not 50, I would not think they could be (3)'s because they had charged dues, but they're, if they have a, uh?
Foundation.
Um, foundation, then that may fall with the (3)'s, but the (4)'s could, could potentially come and involve in some of those areas as well. So is that, is that where we want to land, or what are, what are your thoughts?
Counselor Perry, thank you for the question. I think the, having spoken with Mike earlier about this, what we, the amended language I'd recommend to keep the spirit of it would be any local nonprofit that is benefiting a 501(c)(3). So in other words, Rotary, for instance, which is a (c)(4), could have a benefit for the foundation, which is a (c)(3).
So give me that language one more time, please?
That, uh, any local nonprofit for the exclusive benefit of a 501(c)(3).
Okay, of a 501(c), I'm gonna read that back to you real quickly. Any local nonprofit for the exclusive benefit of a 501(c)(3). Okay. So what, what do we want to do on the pre-function?
Uh, Counselor Perry, I'm just looking down at the next, the most I can give you, unfortunately, is, uh, pre-function is, uh, in the current rate schedule, is defined as the lobby area. So what I think is going on is if you want to have coffee in the lobby outside of your room, say, in between classes or something like that, you can reserve that for $150.
So can I, uh, so I think what I would like to do is, I, I'll lump all these three into one amendment, see, see what happens. Uh, I, unless there's more communication amongst the councilors, Mr. Mayor, I sure don't want to take that away if someone else has something to say.
We have Council Lady Halverson would like?
I'll yell until.
Council Lady Halverson?
Well, I just want to say, I, I appreciate all the work that the staff here has done, as well as Mike Matthews. I know he's not in here, but this has been a concern of mine for over a year, and this is one of the reasons I ran for office, is because I felt that the facility wasn't working for the citizens of Roswell, and I think this is a great step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman, uh, Council Lady Arnold?
Um, to go back to, uh, Councilman Perry's, uh, suggestion on amendments, and this is just a question, so it may be a little simple, but why, why can't we actually just put it as local nonprofits, or kind of keep it wide open? Because I think when you start to, it's just a, a point. I, I didn't realize we could be a little vaguer on that, but, I mean, it's a suggestion as far as keeping it open, and because there's several different 501(c)'s, there's several different levels, and by doing that, I think we just kind of limit. But that's just my personal thoughts.
Uh, Madam Protem, uh, the, the short answer there is that certain of the (c)'s, the 501(c) categories, while they're not-for-profit, are something that the city of Roswell doesn't necessarily want to endorse, uh, by providing subsidized rates, uh, in particular, 501(c)(4)'s that are, uh, campaign committees, or something we, they can pay the full price. Is, is the logic behind it?
That makes sense. I was kind of wondering about the political aspect of it, but yes, I understand now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could, I just had someone, part of a, a civic group just text me, that had concerns that not all civic clubs that are nonprofit, uh, have local foundations. If they were, if they were, if they were doing, let's say, uh, one of them was doing a, if the Kiwanis were doing a, a pancake breakfast, and their foundation was not a local foundation, it was through the National or the, uh, Worldwide Foundation, as Rotary has and some of the other ones, that money would have to go to the National or to the Worldwide Foundation. Whereas if they're trying to raise money for a specific project here in Roswell, they would have, want the desire to be able to do so. So, the three and four would, would potentially cover, I think, what the spirit of what I'm understanding that, that council and staff is desiring to do. Your thoughts?
I'm digest, I guess it's, uh, if I'm understanding what the text was saying, it's, the, the local group would, I guess, the way the, that we worded it right presently, it was any local group donating to any 501(c). So if a local group here wants to do a pancake breakfast and then send money to Puerto Rico because of a hurricane, that would be acceptable.
It, the problem comes in that if a, a 501(c)(3)(4), I mean, poof, I'm really getting out there, Anna. Uh, a 501(c)(4) charges dues, where a 501(c)(3) does not. So if you have a 501(c)(4) that lo, does not have a local foundation, some of our civic clubs do have local foundations within their lo, local club, but if they do not have a local foundation, and they are going to have a, a ball here to raise money, uh, for the, um, the park, the, the, that, uh?
All-inclusive.
Was that?
All-inclusive park?
The all-inclusive, thank you. The all-inclusive park, uh, in order to do it through this verbiage of a 501(c)(3), they're gonna have to send all of their money to the National Foundation in hopes that the National Foundation would get the money back home, where their desire is to raise the money here, keep it here, utilize it here.
Uh, in that case, Counselor, what I'd suggest is a local nonprofit that is for the benefit, exclusive benefit of 501(c)(3) or a local charitable endeavor.
Okay. Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, uh, that we amend resolution 23-20 to add an asterisk under the asterisk 10% deposit due to reserve date, uh, with the, uh, language to put "per day" and an asterisk to be placed next to each amount for each portion of rental. Also, under add-ons, pre-function, uh, parentheses, lobby area there. And then, in the verbiage on the double asterisk at the bottom of local 501(c)(3)'s, receive a 50% discount on rental fees, to strike that language, adding the language, "Any local nonprofit, uh, for the exclusive benefit of a 501(c)(3) or local charitable endeavor shall receive a 50% discount, uh, on rental fees."
Second.
Madam clerk, did you get all that? Madam clerk, you got, okay. So was there any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, we, by a vote of, uh, eight in affirmative, one abstention, uh, and none in the negative, amendment number one passes. Passes eight to zero with one abstention. Okay, back on the, uh, um, resolution 23-20, are there any further questions? Are there any further questions? Seeing none, a clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Abstain with explanation.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
I have a vote of eight, affirmative with zero in the negative, and one abstention. Item 23-20 has passed.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can I get who the second was on that motion?
Halverson.
Halverson.
Thank you.
I, Council Lady Best, for an explanation.
So I abstain because I utilize the Civic Center, or whatever you may call it, every month with the Chavas County Federated Republican Women. So I won't be getting 50% off. Thank you.
Okay. Next we go to item 19, and on this agenda item we have, item 19 is Resolution 23-21 to consider repealing Resolutions 19-83 and Resolutions 20-72 to convert the Spring River Back, Spring River Zoo and Park back to a free zoo and park. Okay, we, so what we have now is we have two individuals signed up, Liz Foster and Carrie Moore have signed up to speak for this item, and, uh, next we'll go, Councilman Orpress to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the recommendation of the General Services Committee, I move for adoption of Resolution 2321, which if adopted will repeal Resolutions 1983 and Resolution 2072 and will convert the Spring River Zoo to a free par, uh, free zoo and park.
Thank you, we have a motion for item, and we have a second.
Second.
Councilman Corn, seconds. Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council members. Resolution 23-21 considers repealing Resolution 19-83 and Resolution 20-72 to convert back the Spring River Zoo to a free zoo and park. Resolution 19-83 passed September 13th, 2019, setting the cost recovery for the Roswell Zoo at the following levels: For 2020 fiscal year, 5%; for 2021, 5%; for the year 2022, 25%; and for the year 2023, 45%. 70/30 is projected to be 7.3% this current year. Total expense has increased over the last four years. In 2000, fiscal year 2021, uh, the expense of the zoo was $436,940.23. For '22, it rose to $774,606.66. In 2023, that went to one point, or $1,184,729.72. In current budget, we are projecting for 2024 a total expense of $1,421,675.66. Now, that's against revenue, uh, collected in 2021 of $13,562.28. Revenue in 2022 of $105,501.18. Current year, uh, fiscal year 2023, $86,455.94. And projected revenue for 2024 of $103,747.13. Again, that's a projected figure. Resolution 2072 passed on December 10th of 2020 and became effective January 1, 2021, establishing the fees for the Spring River Zoo. Resolution 20-72, Exhibit A, sets the fees to be charged in identified free days. Counsel has, is asked to consider Resolution 20 dash, 20, 23 dash 21, uh, or, excuse me, Counsel is asked to consider Resolution 20 dash, the repealing resolution, 19-83, setting the cost recovery for the Roswell Zoo, and Resolution 20-72, establishing fees in Exhibit A. General Service Committee did consider this item at their April 26th meeting and did recommend, uh, to send a full counsel for consideration. I, I will just add or reiterate that the additional cost to collect this fee revenue continues to outstrip actual revenues received by threefold each year, or more.
Are you through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any questions of Mr. Cole on Resolution 23-21? Council, uh, Council Lady Best?
So I don't have any questions. We did this for a reason, uh, when we started this, and it is doing, the 70/30 is not doing what it's acting, but it is growing throughout the years, which we knew it was all going to take time to build up. But it's also doing something else. It is keeping, and, and you guys are gonna probably chew on me, which is okay, it's keeping the riffraff out of the zoo. And the reason I'm gonna say this is because we did get a letter, I believe all the councilors got it before we came in, and it is from a young lady that's worked at the zoo five years. So she's seen it go from a free zoo, and she has seen it go to what it is now, and she's worked there, she's lived there, and I don't think everybody understands, these animals are her children, just like our cat people in the back, our, our rescues in the back. She watches these animals every day. She feeds these animals every day. I don't know how many councilors have gone out there or even mucked a stall, I don't know. That's part of my livelihood. Nobody has bothered to ask her what the staff feels. The staff is too scared to come forward, which is really a shame because we're all in this together. It's not just me, it's just not the other nine people down the way. It's a whole city. And I've highlighted a few things in here that you guys probably don't even think of. So with money being paid at the gate, whether it's a dollar, two dollars, it shows that you care for the zoo, you care for the animals. With just people walking in, you're gonna have problems. I don't think the bear really appreciates, uh, ring pops, little rings that you wear that have the big diamond, they don't appreciate the ring pops, um, the junk food that's given to them. The, the city hall has security buttons that you can push if somebody goes in and frustrates any of those girls, the police are right down the way, they're real handy. These ladies don't have that, and there's a lot of hiding places out on that zoo. If you don't see who comes in and who goes out and keeps track of that, which it is at a cost, I get it, you said threefold, okay, so let's hire two security cops, 24/7, because you did have dogs dig under, that's been taken care of, but if your security cop was there, he could have caught them. Same within the day. These ladies work, gentlemen too, I'm not sure if there's gentlemen out there or not, but ladies and gentlemen work out there and they give their lifeblood out there. They've had homeless come in, uh, they've had homeless come in demanding to take the bears because he's supposed to sacrifice and eat them, so I would say that would be a mental, a mental person. Pulled out a knife on these girls. I don't think you understand how much these animals mean to these kids. I would like to read the letter, um, I'm afraid she'll be retaliated against, um, which is really totally unfair. You need to find a way to keep these people secure, and even if you don't pay at the gate, you're gonna have to have somebody at the gate watching them as they come in and as they go out. I don't know if you're gonna keep your store there, uh, your, your, uh, you have a room where you do parties and stuff? Mr. Wright, would you like to elaborate on what I'm saying? I don't want to put you in a situation, um, that is wrong or bad, and you don't have to, it doesn't matter. It's just wrong that the city is expecting to put these girls back in, been, back in a situation where they have to do more jobs than take care of their animals. They got a target on their back by the public. Just think, if you're out there and you're in, you're working with, uh, the train or cleaning out the restrooms or whatever you may be doing, you don't know who's coming in and out, and somebody steps out from behind the restroom as you walk out, you know, who are you gonna call? Because your office is quite a ways from that, and, and there's no one to call. I'd just like to say shame, shame on who votes yes for this because we're not giving our animals and our people love. Would you like to elaborate, sir?
I kind of did this in general services. My goal here is to serve the community. I-
Mr. Wright, would you step up to the mic, please?
I got the crud, so I'm trying to not-
Okay, thank you.
I understand what you're trying to say, I'll speak louder.
Thank you.
So I said this in general services, that I am here to serve regardless if there's a fee or not. The goal is, is to provide a service that is quality and professional, where we have the staff to properly care for the animals. When I first got here, we had a USDA inspection with quite a long list, and we've addressed that. Why? Because we're properly staffed. We're able to do our job, we're able to make those improvements, and many people on this council have recognized the hard work I and the staff have done, and I appreciate that. Our concern is to make sure the animals continue to get the welfare, that the community is educated, so we have an educational position, that we have grounds also being taken care of. There's a variety of ways we can work out to cover those, um, and I would love to be involved in those discussions.
Amen.
But in these regards, is, like I said, when it comes to the fees, I can sit there and say, yeah, we're probably not making our revenue, but I can state that we did do rides before when we were free and paid people, we did do concessions before and paid people. So the only added position in this regards for the fees was the person at the gate, and we do have people greet you at Walmart to be that check valve. So these are all the things that you've stated, that another keeper has stated in the letter. My job is to protect the animals. My job is to provide a good quality service. My job is to fend us against our animal detractors, and my job is to protect my staff.
Okay. So just to, one or two more highlights. This young lady saw somebody beat on the ponies when the ponies were there, just went out with a stick-
Can I go sit down now?
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, just beat on the ponies. They would chase the peacocks and pull their feathers out, you know how pretty those are? They don't want to pay six bucks at Hobby Lobby, so let's chase the peacocks at the zoo and pull those out. I'm actually embarrassed that, that this group up here would turn this away, because even though it's maybe making 16,000 or 83,000 by the time you get done, you're at least giving that back to the animals and letting the staff do their job, so, but these are their babies, and our animal people should know how we like to take care of our critters, whether they're kittens, dogs, horses, bears, lions, so, thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady, or, excuse me, Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I need some clear, well, first, my, and that, questions may be answered, did you say we had some that, that wanted to speak on this from the public?
Yeah, we have-
I would certainly yell to them, that may help me with my understanding.
We have, yes, we have, Ms. Liz, uh, Liz Foster. You come, you have to identify yourself to the council lady and your address, please.
I'm Liz Foster.
And your address?
My address, 14, I don't know what the zoo address is, 1410 West Tilden.
Okay.
So I'm one of the ones that wanted to come forward because this affects a whole lot of us.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic?
There's five of us keepers there, and day in and day out, all we do is take care of these animals. We cannot watch the gate. I commend you for everything that you said, and I am currently the oldest person working at that zoo. I'm not a young spring chicken that's just watched this stuff. I was there when the dogs attacked, I was also the one that chased those dogs every night for three months, and I've seen the places that homeless people can come in, walk through that gate, and hide. And so by allowing anybody to walk through those gates, you are putting my life in danger, you're putting my coworker's life in danger, and then you're risking the lives of the animals. And all I got from the question was, how are you gonna protect us, was nothing. Nobody could answer that question, so can you? Apparently not. So my life means nothing to you? My coworker's lives mean nothing to you? Is Amanda still here? She helps with education, we lost our educator. I actually got attacked at work last week because we don't have an educator now because nobody wants to refill that position, come on up here, because now we are spread so thin doing things that technically we don't have time to be doing, and one of that is education and making sure that the animals that are our education animals are doing, being worked with every day and going through this. And so what we're doing is, we're literally just going through this process. We make sure that everybody's, the first thing we do when we walk in, we go check every single animal in that zoo before we do anything else, every single animal. Are they alive? Are they okay? Nobody's bleeding, everybody's moving, then we go back and we make their diets, and then we head out and we all have a certain job that we do. I did see Chad, and I saw Mr. Matthews riding around on a golf cart. Nobody else has come out there to actually see what we do. Amanda has tried to help us, um, is Juanita here still? When those dogs came, I didn't see any of you, but Juanita came out, she had no idea what she was doing, Amanda's team jumped in, it was a hell of an effort, and you guys just want to throw us to the wind like we're nothing. Again, my life matters, so do those animals and so do my coworkers, and you just want to make it free so that anybody can walk in there, because we will never know who comes to those gates, we cannot watch the cameras 24/7. We have jobs to do, and we do them damn good. And you guys are just sitting here looking at me, and you still haven't answered my question, what are you going to do to protect me and my coworkers and the animals? Because that one person sitting at that gate can at least call us on the radio and tell us that someone that's kind of sketchy is there. Have any of you sat at that park by that zoo at night? That's sketchy as heck. Not one cop has ever come by that park at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock. I know this because I sat at that park for dang near three months, watching for those dogs to make sure those animals were okay. Nobody else joined us, and, you know, Amanda has done everything she can. Guest services is vital to this zoo-
Excuse me, your three minutes is up.
Well, then she can talk.
Thank you.
Because my three minutes is up.
I do agree with everything you said-
Can you please identify yourself?
Amanda Dickerson, the guest service supervisor for the city of Roswell. I do agree with everything Counselor Best said, as well as Liz. For instance, the peacocks, when those feathers were being pulled out, our guest services was the one that called them over the radio and notified the keepers that that was happening. We are able to identify these issues before it gets worse. We do have an educator that's out. One of the incidents that happened recently was with our educational animals, and without having that educator to sit there and spend the time to educate our animals, give them that time that's needed so we can provide these services to school, it's not gonna work. Parties, guest services doesn't just sit at the gate, so guest services also cleans the parking lot, does other things around that area, does the parties, um, tours, helps with educational programs, the spring breaks, um, we help everywhere. We are the first ones there to set up for events, the ones to tear down, um, I mean, we just, we try to help out everywhere. When the dogs attacked, we stepped in and helped with diets, I mean, we just do not sit there, we try to lend a hand to everybody. So in all fairness, I know you're taking the amount of money from the admissions, saying that we're losing the money, but you also gotta take the- that we're losing the money, but you also got to take the amount from the concessions, the store, the, all of this, because we do all of those jobs as well. So that's all I have.
Fair reply.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we had, next we had Carrie Moore.
Carrie Moore, Friends of Spring River Zoo, thirty-two oh one North Kentucky. Mr. Mayor, members of council, burns from the rocket slide, getting dizzy on the merry-go-round, drinking from the lion's head, playing in the old lady's shoe, and fighting over who got the ride, the white rooster first. We all have memories of Peppermint Park. Yes, I am old enough. That Spring River Zoo was just Peppermint Park. The bears were my favorite animals to visit, and they loved Sprite, corn nuts, and ice cream. I'll go back to that in a minute. You see, the exhibits is almost exactly the same today as it was back then. The only difference is the bears now have a higher fence for safety. The adobe huts are the same, the circus cages are the same. This is over forty years ago, and it's almost all still the same. I would like to say we have grown more knowledgeable in animal care in the last forty years, but the zoo has been stuck in time. Since 2018, Friends of Spring River Zoo has donated over a hundred sixty thousand dollars to update exhibits, bring in new animals, purchase enrichment toys, and of course, feed a few keepers or two. However, we need so much more money to focus on the care, ethics, and integrity of the zoo. While we don't care if there is an entry fee or not, we do care that if there is a zoo in Roswell, that we, the citizens and the city, need to properly fund the zoo, which includes creating natural habitats. The zoo is a learning experience for Roswell citizens and visitors, but what are we teaching them with our antiquated enclosures? The zoo currently has a train that does not operate, a concession stand that is unusable, bathrooms that make you wonder if a porta potty would be a better option, and that's coming from a female, so you know that's nasty, and a classic nineteen twenty-seven Spillman Wood carousel that was graciously donated fifty-two years ago and has had very little restoration. Dr. William Conway, an animal conservationist who redefined the Bronx Zoo, wrote, "The justification for removing an animal from the wild for exhibition must be judged by the value of that exhibition in terms of human education and appreciation, and the suitability and effectiveness of the exhibition in terms of each wild creature's contentment and continued welfare." We know zoos are expensive endeavors. Exhibits cost money, food costs money, keepers cost money, ground maintenance costs money, research costs money, programs cost money, and the money has to come from somewhere. Admission fees, no matter the zoo across this United States, do not come anywhere near paying for the operational cost, let alone updating the exhibits, which is why we work hard looking for donors' grants and creating fundraisers, which, by the way, has been difficult due to the rumors going around that the city council wants to close the zoo. The zoo has had a unique opportunity of receiving funds from La Perino, but this council decided to redirect those funds. Regardless of what y'all decide about the entry fees, we want to know that the city is committed to updating exhibits to meet current and future requirements, growing the diversity of the exhibits, and putting the monies in fixing the train, the pond, and the carousel, all of which we are committed in helping to do. Now, going back to Councilor Best, by the way, she didn't see mine, so it's interesting that she's talking about ring pots. The reason I know about the bears is before they had that security fence up there, you literally could lean over the bear exhibit, and they would stand against the wall, and in the summertime, they used high school students to operate the train and the carousel, and we fed them Sprite and corn nuts and ice cream, and they loved it. So.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Those are the individuals who have signed up to talk on, on this item. Actually, we have Council Lady Howerson.
First, I wish Liz was still in here and Amanda, because I want to make it clear, I myself have been to the zoo several times, John giving me a few tours, so that information is false, what she said. Also, in the letter from the employee, they said that they are not allowed to say what they want. At General Services, Mr. Lopez, so you can attest to this, the employees did have an opportunity to tell us, and they did let us know how they feel. So that's not true information either. Another thing she said is she's not appreciative. I appreciate every zoo keeper out there. I think their job is very difficult, and I appreciate what they do for those animals. My daughter volunteered out there, and it's not an easy job, but they, they put their heart and soul into taking care of those animals, and I appreciate that. What concerns me is, years ago when I took my kids there, when Elaine Mayfield was the zookeeper, I even told her, maybe just charge people a dollar, just to try to keep some of these degenerates out. But not charging people, you know, when you charge them, even if you charge them and they're mean, they're just going to still be mean to the animals, whether or not you charge them. So you can't stop that. I mean, you can try, but when they come in until you see them, you're not going to know what they're going to do to those animals. And I guess Amanda's not here, but Juanita, maybe you can answer this. Right now, we charge for the zoo. She's saying we don't have an educator, but I don't understand why they're bringing that up, because if we're charging and we don't have an educator, what's not charging going to affect that as well? Does that make sense?
They stepped out to talk with Liz because she was really upset.
They have to talk better into the microphone.
Liz stepped out because she was really upset, and so Amanda went to go check on her. I believe the educator position has been put on hold, and my understanding is whenever there is a birthday party, there's an educational opportunity that they bring one of those animals for a fee. So I think, I'm assuming that that's what it is. I don't know for sure.
Okay, but charging or not charging for the zoo isn't going to affect that, because they'd still charge a fee if they have an educational opportunity.
It depends on their party package, yes.
Okay, that's all I have, I yield.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I, for one, have sat on both sides of this, because for the longest time, I was very proud that we had a free zoo. But then, when I moved here in ninety-five and to what we have today, it's a hundred percent, or more than a hundred, it's a thousand percent better. The free zoo that we had in ninety-five and up to twenty, well, when we started making the improvements, probably about eight to ten years ago, it did, did need to be a free zoo. In fact, we probably should pay people to go through it, because it was in such poor shape. They've done, like I said, a thousand percent turnaround. They changed it, and they made it worth going to. Former Council, Councilor Grant used to say, if it's free, do you really want to go to it? We've proven over the, the years that we started choosing, charging, that a large percentage of the people that come through are from out of town. So now we're, except, we're getting money from out of town. Now, maybe you're saying that it's not, the, the person that's, it's costing us more to collect than to have those people there, but that's still not true, because we still need those people there doing other things. The foundation does a great job, but we get to the point where our city council doesn't support the, the foundation. We, they had a big event out there. I don't think I saw anybody's face out there that sits on this council, except mine. Were you at the latest one? Well, like I said, I was, I was there at the latest one, and like I said, I did not see one of us up, one of us, except for me, there. So you've been, you were at the latest one? It was, it was a month ago? The April, April twenty-second.
Kind of being sponsors most of their events.
That's, anyway, this is, but I'm still saying, this is a, we, it's important that we support this zoo, and it's important that fees or no fees, I, I still say that the fees help, and the idea that we keep cutting and keep cutting and keep cutting them, we're going to get back to the nineteen ninety-five zoo that no one wants to have, and if we get to that point, then, then the council has to make a decision and go to the citizens and say, do we need a zoo or not? I think we do, and I think we need to invest in it, and I think we need to keep our fees, and the education portion of it, too many times, people don't know. If you're a, if you're a member of Friends of the Spring River Zoo, you go to the zoo for free. So I don't understand why people get upset when they say it costs too much, and now we have all the free days, and how often do those take? I just get to the point where we keep having, getting pushed to free, 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 but then we keep being told by the same people that are cutting fees and getting rid of fees that we're going broke. So I, it doesn't make sense to me to, to cut fees and, and make everything free, but we're going broke. So I think it's ridiculous to, to move on this, and I think we should stay, keep the fees as they are. I yield.
Thank you, Councilman Foster. Next, we have Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't, I won't be continuing to berate on the subject we've already heard from, but I just want to ensure if the, if the, the passionate lady, and I understand her passion, and I just want to make sure she understands, because, and I do appreciate that this council keeps decorum, and we don't start interacting when it's not appropriate to give them the opportunity, but, you know, we have, we don't provide security to, you know, transit the adult center, the cemeteries, I mean, we, you know, it's just one of those things. So I, I just want to make sure you understand it's not of not caring for anyone, but I'm on the other side of this. I, I have a, a very big concern of this, of this whole concept of just not charging again. One question that I have, and I don't know who to answer this, and John, you just don't look like you feel well, and I hate to ask you to even attempt to walk up here. If you, if you don't feel good, then please don't. I'm so sorry. If I understood Mr. Cole earlier, the thought is that it's costing threefold what we're collecting, if I understood that correctly, can you tell me what positions are, are affected by charging at the zoo? What, what positions is it that's costing three hundred thousand from the budget?
That is a good question. I was never brought into those discussions to know where those numbers are really coming from. I brought that up in general services, asked to see that information. On Juanita, I requested the information, too. We have not received it.
Can you tell?
So I can tell you, like I mentioned.
Let me give you a better question than, than, than Mr. Wright. What positions currently employed at the zoo are employed specifically because of the charging at the zoo? Would that be guest services associate?
To the best of my recollection, because I wasn't here when we were free, and I'm going to look, look at the point. We still had a carousel person, a train person, concession people, so to the best of my knowledge, the only added person is the person specifically at the gate. Now, last year, we did add two other keepers to help bring our standards up in animal welfare.
Now, the positions that will be, it would be all the guest service associates is what the positions are going to be cut or taken away. Prior to that, it was other staff coming in. I assume Parks had it before, so they were doing all of that other stuff, but the guest service associate is the one that you're taking away from the carousel, the train, the gift shop, the concessions and admissions, as well as the educational programs.
So I'm not going to look at, I'm not going to call out names on this, on this, the sheet that I have here, but I have a guest service administrative, and then I have a guest services associate, then I have a guest, another guest services associate. The two guest service associates are paid the exact same, the administrator a little bit more than that. If I was to take all three of those positions and add those together, I'm still only at a hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Yes, correct. That's where we didn't understand, where the three hundred and something thousand, that's one of the reasons why we had asked to see those, so we don't know where that goes. The only thing I could think of is that we are allotted, I believe, fourteen guest service positions for that, for the zoo. We've never had all those positions. I think the most that we've ever had during our busiest time was during the summer, about six, and we use temps, and then we, when we're not busy, we let the temps off, so.
Well, now, that would make sense, if we've got positions held in the budget for, for fourteen, that would, that would definitely drive it up.
So that's, yes, but we don't ever have that many.
Okay.
And one thing that I did propose was to only keep five.
So I'm, I'll just make some comments from here, I guess, then. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We were just handed, before we came in here this evening, budget information, and if we're going to be removing three hundred thousand dollars' worth of expenses, employment expenses, or whatever those expenses are, associated with ticketing at the, at the front of the zoo, then I think we understand. But I, as I look at it, I don't see, as I, from the, as I look at the sheet, the PSCB Summary of Changes, the Personal Services and Employee Benefits Summary of Changes, I only see one position being considered for deletion in there. So if we're not going to be deleting the positions, but we're deleting a portion of the finances that is utilized for those positions, that, that seems like we're going in the wrong direction. So I, I don't know if there's anybody who would like to speak towards that. I want to see us to have a good zoo. I want us to see us have a good zoo, and I will say, I am one of those who knows what the zoo was like before and what the zoo was like after. My family had a, a membership once, because it became easier to do the membership than it was to, with the fees than it was to just continue going without the, the other way. But before, my wife, when I was on, on staff with Tabernacle over here, my wife and I would meet for lunch several times a week, and we would utilize the picnic tables, and we would walk at least two, sometimes four laps around in the zoo. It's sort of a way to get a breath of fresh air, and we've seen the zoo pre-fees, and we've seen the zoo post-fees, and I can't say that I've seen less people, as, as is stated in the actual resolution, and the, whereas the implemented fees led to a decreased attendance. I, I, I didn't see that, and I don't know if someone can maybe explain to me where, if we have any information that, that backs that up, that we've had a decrease in attendance due to, to having the fees. These are just questions that I have to start with. I'll yield for, for now.
Yes.
Can someone flip back the presentation? Well, that would be great, and I did have to step out for a moment.
There you go, right there. You see the revenue side there?
Yes, sir.
Counselor, I, I'm just looking through some emails that, what I think, I'm not sure where the three hundred thousand figure came from. What I can say is that the, the guest services payroll that was increased in order to accommodate, they do other work, but it was increased to accommodate charging, is a hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred seven dollars and six cents, and zoo overtime is projected at twenty-six four seventy-one thirty-three. The total collections to date are about sixty-one thousand nine six zero seven two, which means it's likely that the revenue projection of one oh three, a hundred three thousand is too high, because we only have two months left in the fiscal. So I, I think it probably should have read closer to two hundred thousand, the idea being that if these full-time employees are pulled off, they, overtime is no longer required, and they can be dedicated to other services. Again, I'm, I'm not particularly eloquent on this. Mr. Matthews was the, the driving investigator, shall we say, but thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just, yeah, I was going to ask you about your pink telephone there, but I won't, I'm just aggrabing. So, so I understand that, but there again, I go back to, are we still, are we truly going to see depreciation, what kind of depreciation of expenses are we going to see? If... If we're going to, if we're going to net that depreciation, if that's going to come out, then we're talking about making some sense, but I'm not hearing that so far. And that's what I need to know. I would say, you know, I don't know who needs to speak to that, and I don't know who to direct that to. But, go ahead, and then I'll say.
Counselor, I think that there's a lot of unanswered questions, and as the parliament-
Say that again.
There are quite a number of unanswered questions, and as the parliamentarian, I might suggest that this be postponed for a month, so Mr. Matthews can fully present, since he's done all the research.
And I'm perfectly content with that. I'm not here to cause problems, or, I just would like some answers.
Are you through, Councilman Perry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Orpessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I need to ask our legal department, can you explain the letter that we got from La Prino concerning the zoo and where the money is supposed to go to?
Sure, Counselor. So the La Prino money that was a payment in lieu of, we'll call it a payment of lieu of taxes, for simplification, when they had an industrial revenue bond issued, was initially gonna be earmarked for the zoo. The actual amount was not 2 million upfront, but was gonna be closer to $67,000 over the course of 20-some years. La Prino expressed their desire to have this money earmarked for some other thing. The rec center, for example, is something that they were interested in contributing over the zoo.
So the council did not decide to redirect that money? Is that correct?
Correct, Counselor. The, well, the money was never actually earmarked by the council. It's always gone to the general fund, and we've only received one check.
Because the statement that was made a while ago, if I remember correctly, was that La Prino money was moved someplace else by the council.
No, yeah, sorry. If I was the one who said that, I must have misspoke.
No, no, not by you.
Yeah, to my understanding, and the treasurer would be able to answer better, just, any pilot money just goes to the general fund as a matter of course.
But the fact is that the city council didn't take action to redirect the La Prino money. That's my point.
Yeah, I don't believe there was ever a budget amendment, or it was ever lined item in the budget, that it would go there.
Okay. You know, and then the philosophy that if it's free, it's not worthwhile going to the zoo or any other event, I totally disagree with you, or with that concept. I would argue that if you ask the individuals that are not able to pay for a fee, ask them and see if that's not worthwhile, to have a free zoo. Because you have a lot of kids in this community that would enjoy the zoo, a free zoo. You know, and I've been in Roswell over 50 years, and I can certainly remember, especially on Easter Sunday, Atkinson being the sidewalks, I mean, the parking spaces on both sides, both parking spaces being full, and cars lined up on College Street and Atkinson Street, and that place was packed. You had to go in there about 6 o'clock in the morning trying to get a space. If you go today, you hardly see anybody. I don't know, back then, when it was free back then, I don't think there was any records kept how many people went to the zoo and how many people didn't. And we keep insisting that the zoo is bringing in money from the visitors. And if that is the case, if we want to make a visitor zoo, then yeah, that would be great. But if you want to have a community zoo, like we used to have, and let the people from Roswell enjoy it, then I think it would be great to have a free zoo. You know, I enjoyed that zoo the way it used to be, because I had kids and I have grandkids that got raised in that zoo, and I pretty much spent a lot of the Sundays and Saturdays and Sundays with the kids out there on the, with the pond and the animals and what have you. And now it's, with the fees, it's one of those things that you have to be an exclusive member to be able to enjoy it. And I know that the argument is that, that, oh, well, I lost my train of thought on that one, so, you know, let me go to another point, where the city loses money. Say if we don't have a fee, we'll be losing money. Doesn't seem to be a big problem on other areas of the community to be losing money. We just heard Mr. Kunkel give a report. According to his estimate, we've lost like $500,000 for the Department of Health, when they were willing to rent it, lease it for 20 years. And part of this council decided to reduce that lease to a five-year lease. I brought up the fact that the landfill lost $2.1 million on tipping fees. That didn't seem to be a big problem. But it sure seems to be a big problem when you talk about the fees at the zoo. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Orpessa. Next, we have Council Lady Arnold.
Okay, so I have a couple of quick questions. I'll be honest, considering the amount of revenue that's being brought in, I actually, I don't understand why it shouldn't be free, because we're really not making much money off of doing that. I understand that there is some issues that may arise and may change things, but I have to tell you, that's a huge budget jump from 2021. 2023 to 1.2, because I'm gonna round up, and then next year, 1.4. Considering that the dog attack and the safety issues were prior to budget, did anyone think to maybe budget in a safety person into that 1.1? I mean, we've been working on a budget. I mean, if you've had these incidents for a while, I don't know that changing the fees now is gonna create a lot of unsafety, any more than we already have. And so there was, seems to have been no forethought, because, you know, I think that that would have been included in that 2023 budget proposal. But I don't hear anyone saying that it was, so. I yield.
Thank you. Council Lady Best.
Yes, I just wanted to make a point. The Friends of the Zoo, they only got an estimated 300 people this year. Last year, it was over 700, and we did have good advertising. I'm really upset that we're speaking about the farmland that we worked so hard, and La Prino donated this money, whether it was a little at a time, or however, it was on a line item strictly for farmland at the zoo. We didn't see a letter, again, like Mr. Orpessa said, we didn't vote on that change. And every time I go to a person and say, you know what, if you donate to the tennis courts and you put it on a certain line item, it will not be moved. It will be used for the nets or whatever. So now you've put me in a position with the citizens of Roswell, telling them that if this goes on a line item, whether it's for animal control, whether it's for the zoo, whether it's for the museum, when I tell them this goes on a line item, now you're telling them, oh, we just put it wherever we want. So I'm having a real, real problem with the farmland just going away, and you telling me that it went over to the recreation center. So where at the recreation center? There's no animals there? Are you gonna put a farmland by the exclusive park? You know, so that needs to be discussed, and it doesn't need to be discussed tonight. I'm disappointed in that. And most of your Sunday afternoons, Mr. Orpessa, like you said, we saw when we were kids. I remember when the zoo was across from my house, over by the tennis courts. We had the same thing on Easter, you're correct. But social media has taken over our world. Instead of our parents getting out and taking their children to the zoo and the museum, this is why it's happening. I still feel a fee is for the animals. It's to show that you care for the zoo. It's like paying a ticket into an arcade, or paying a ticket into the movie. That is one of the cheapest places you can go and have a wonderful entertainment time. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hill, thank you, Council Lady. Or Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to tell that he employs team members at the zoo. We do care. That everyone is important. And I'm not happy, and I think she's not, they're not happy to think that we don't care, but that's not true, John. We do care. And we do care what the Friends of the Zoo are doing. You know, I think we were in a meeting, Ms. Moore, and I appreciate what you do in your group, that I asked that the city help promote people to be members of your organization, and that we do advertising, and I hope that Ms. Jennings is continuing to do that to promote the zoo. Part of the issues here are, was that you were all sold a bill of goods that was unrealistic. This cost recovery, 70, 30, whatever this stuff was, is hogwash. 23, the resolution of 19-83 said in 2023, the cost recovery was gonna be 45%. Well, folks, it's 7%. That theory was pie in the sky. And you gotta stop thinking about these cost recoveries in that form or fashion. Because what are we gonna do if we're gonna go to 45%? Okay, well, how are you gonna cut the zoo down to get to that 45%? We're not gonna do it. We're gonna provide a service to the community. This is a quality of life issue. So it's unfortunate that you all bought into that 70, 30 concept, because it doesn't work. Never did, never will. That's why this facility here was never utilized like it should have been. Museum has the same problem. We've got to stop thinking like that and provide services to the people of this community that they have paid for. And stop this cost recovery action. We're not a profit business. We are here, this is paid for by the taxpayers, and why do we want to keep getting into their pockets? Yes, we have a tight budget, but we can make that budget work. It may not be what everybody wants it to work, but we will make it work, because we don't have a printing press like the federal government has. We've had some things happen here. What about the utility rate increases that did not take place? That still bothers me to this day, that one individual decided not to do that. And we all are gonna pay for it. Unfortunately, the actions of that individual has cost us residents of this community. The water fund is gonna have to be supported by the general fund this year, folks. That's taking money away from potential zoo or other areas of this community. So, again, John, I think some of these concerns, and I'm gonna direct this to Mr. Cole, and I'm gonna direct this to the chief, that these security concerns, that she's saying that no one shows up out there, maybe that needs to be a priority. Maybe there needs to be dialogue between the departments, so that the safety of these individuals at work are taken care of, their concerns are not, have to worry about this, about a homeless person being in there. You know, today, I went and looked at two of the homes that were on the condemnation list. You look from the outside of them, they look pretty nice. They could be rehabbed. But guess what I did? I went and knocked on the doors of people who lived next door to those homes, and asked them what they felt, not just what we felt. What did they feel about those homes being taken down? Every one of them said, take them down. You know why? Homeless. They call them, one gentleman told me that these homeless people call them waters. I guess that's so they can go in and get, I don't know why they call them waters, but that's, but we need to talk to the citizens of this community. So with that, I'm gonna ask that we move to set this resolution to the side and postpone it. I make a motion to that effect.
Second. We have a motion to that, to set this item aside. We have Councilman Corn.
Our motion is to set it aside till the next councilman.
To set it aside to the next councilman. I would just like to point out, Councilman Corn is still on the list to speak. I understand there's a motion. I just, I want to, there are several people, several councillors that have spoken twice, or maybe three times, on this issue, and I think Councilman Corn ought to be given an opportunity to speak. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow Councilman Corn and anyone else who hasn't spoken, allow them the time to speak, if that's agreeable with the council.
I don't want it to be anyone's voice silenced.
Okay, Councilman, thank you very much. Any further objection? Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's interesting for me to sit here and listen to all these arguments, and quite a few of them aren't really to the point. But this is what I see. And I stopped by the zoo the other day. Didn't call anybody, didn't tell them. I just walked in, gave the young man, sitting by a building that's supposed to be, I don't know, their store, and it was purchased, and I don't know how much money it's gonna cost to make that building that was purchased by the city of Roswell, to where a person can go in there. It was not designed for that. Never was. And, but anyway, it was purchased, and it's sitting there. And I had the young man open it up, and I went in and looked, and they've got electrical wires running all over the place, and they're waiting for, I was told by that young man, they were waiting for electrical inspection to get that phase of it done, so they can come in and shore up the building, where it can be inhabited by humans. It was supposed to be a storage shed. That's it. When it was purchased, that's what was purchased, I guess, was a storage shed. That all happened before I got here. And if we charge or don't charge, and I beg to differ with my councilperson to my right, the carousel does not work today. Doesn't work. Well, now it'll go around in a circle, Mr. Mayor, but it needs to be regeared. Somebody that had repaired didn't understand exactly what they were doing, I guess. I also happened to run across some people that were working on the fixtures on the carousel. They're overhauling them. Not costing us a thing, except- Not costing us a thing, except some space. And they're volunteers working on this stuff. I don't know what it's going to turn out like, but they're working on it, they're trying. And that's all you can ask anybody to do is give it their best shot. The train doesn't work because it has not had proper maintenance. I was told by some people that there weren't any parts available to make the train work. And right after that meeting, we Googled up and found all sorts of stuff online that could be used to rehab the train or replace it or whatever is, I'm not sure if you need one joint of track or you need to replace the whole thing. I don't know. The other thing that I'm a little disturbed about is during the COVID situation, a decision was made to drain the pond. And the county, in spite of some people's think, thinking, went out there and helped them dig it out. And it, you can't, you can't walk up, or you shouldn't walk up to the edge of that pond right now because the shore is going to, could crumble. It's got bad erosion. It wasn't completed properly for whatever reason. The well that supplies the water to that pond is in disrepair. And you can see, looking at the screen, Mr. Mayor, that we're spending a lot of money out there, and there's not a whole lot of stuff, I'm sorry, that is getting done. And nobody's advocating giving a free zoo means that if and when we get the carousel repaired or the train repaired, that you can't charge a fee for those two kind of functions. That's above and beyond. I haven't seen anything. Maybe I'm a little naive, but somebody wants to have a party for the kids out there, a birthday party or whatever they want to do, and they've got to be set up and tore down, there's a fee for that. We're not talking about that fee. Now, somebody straighten me out if I'm wrong. Chad, you got anything?
Yes, Councilmember Corn, thank you. So you're not wrong. And, you know, it's, I want to keep my opinions out of it, but we look at the revenues and we look at the expenditures. Let's start there. We see a growing problem, and we know that our budget has a lot of problems, and it's probably going to be worse next year because we've been dipping into cash, my understanding, for the last nine years rather than building cash. So what that means is our revenues have remained flat and our expenditures, recurring expenditures continue to go up. The zoo is a perfect example of that in spite of revenue receipt collection attempts. I think the staffing has certainly gone up, and it has gone from a parks, groundskeeping, maintenance-centric type staff, my understanding, to more of a guest services tour, special tour type staff. It's a fact that those gates close at four o'clock every day. It's not an opinion that when growing up, that parking lot was full, and that was a service to our community. I think where I get into the opinion piece is I've read the newspapers these last year, two years, three years, and I've seen what has happened at that zoo. And I've gone to the zoo now twice and seen with my own eyes what has happened to that zoo, with the fence down the middle of the playground, with the train not working, with the carousel not usable. I wouldn't put my kids on that carousel at this point, with the pond. Now, that's not a finger pointing type thing. It's, there have been transitions there, but what I'm, what we are asking in this resolution is let's stop the bleeding, give us a direction so that we can move this thing forward. There are things we could do. You know, we could cut the grass, we could take down the fence, we could open up the park side to our community and its children. We could get the train going. And, and looking at that with Mr. Wright as recently as this week, Mr. Matthews and I went out there. Of course, when we arrived, there was no one at the gate. The table was folded up and the chair was stuck in the shade. So we walked on in. We did meet up with Mr. Wright. He brought his golf cart and picked us up and took us around the zoo. We had some questions about a downed fence that a work order had not been placed on. We had questions about the break in the train tracks where we can see that the, the train tracks go across their pathway that goes back and forth to access some areas over by the greenhouse. We saw a greenhouse that was full of dead trees and shrubs that had been donated by a business here in town. We, we saw a lot of maintenance issues, a lot of maintenance issues. And I think that that's, we've moved away from the grounds and the maintenance into an attempt to do education and revenue receipting and those types of things. And I understand that, and I don't fault the staff for their efforts to make that work and to make that fly. But the issue I see, and you know, I come from finance and budget, is this thing is bleeding us, and it's not getting better. And it's not a contention, bone of contention with the staff. It's what do we do to fix this? What, what can we do to maybe become more parks and maintenance oriented at that particular facility so that we, when we have a fence that's down and dogs that have been known to get in, we get the fence back up quickly, immediately? It's a picket fence. We can do those kinds of things, and that's relatively cheap. But there are also things with regard to the well. And again, don't know whose decision or what those were at the time, but the, the well was shut off so that we could dredge. Well, you can't shut off a well with this type of water in this, this area because it seizes up. You know, and so replacing that with potable city water is, is not the best option either. The better option is to fix your well. That's a free source of water. And as we see when we drive by the zoo these days, the water, there's water in there, and that's the water table, my understanding. That, that water is not being regenerated and pumped back in at this point. That is the actual level of the water table. But we're not watering the grass over there that was planted, my understanding, a while back, so that is dying. But I've come to understand that the irrigation system does work and can be turned on, both manually and, and digitally. But we're not doing those things. So would like to focus on the things that we have, and, and Mr. Matthews and I have talked about this extensively, in every area and every department. Our budget is such that we don't have the same luxuries that we've been relying on in, in previous years and spending, spending down our cash balance, our cash reserve to do it. We're, we're running out of that. That, that is about to be off the table. And it seems like every time we turn around, whether it's an ambulance service going from 165,000 to 2.6 million, 2.4 million, to an additional surprise cost of 1.4 million here and, and TSA cost of another, more than 2 million there. It's, this, this is getting worse, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions to move forward. That doesn't mean running staff out of here or those types of things, but it, it could mean pulling down a fence, opening up our park, mowing it, having kids in there, running around and playing, addressing a set of train tracks for a train that runs. And those train tracks, again, Googled that up and have found more than five different sources. Some were from China, some were from California, some were related to the mining industry, 12-pound track, some were related to amusement park industry. I think the last thing I saw was 30 feet at $227 per 30 feet of track. So I, I think those things are doable. I think unseizing the well is doable. I think getting the carousel geared properly is doable, not with millions of dollars, by the way. I think the train track, not with millions of dollars, is, is doable. And so that's our reasoning that we've got to get this back in line with our budget, and this isn't the only area where we're having that. But if you've been to the zoo, if you've read the newspapers, you certainly know what we've seen at the zoo.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I believe was added, and, and I see our park director back there, when they dredged the pond, they also put some aerators in there. Is that correct? You can just nod your head. Well, and they haven't been turned on in, in a long time. If they were ever turned on, I don't know. I hope they work because we know what happens in Roswell whenever you, with this, this water that we, we have, it plugs up the pipes if they're just sitting there full of water. And so we've had lots of different issues and lots of different problems. And, Mr. Mayor, I asked some people at the zoo, what's it cost us to have this individual sitting out there now to collect the fee? Now I find out he's a guard and he does all this other stuff. And I didn't get, I didn't get a very good answer. Maybe I didn't ask a very good question, but if you've got a place in your business that costs you X number of dollars an hour, and it's going to be, it's going to be manned so many hours, it's a pretty easy equation in my mind to say, eh, it costs $40,000, it costs $20,000, it costs $102,000. I don't, it's not hard to figure out, but I have not gotten that question answered yet. And so, Mr. Mayor, this, this is a pretty simple up and down vote in my mind. You either have a free zoo or, or you continue to charge and it's not cost, it is shown that it is not cost effective to allocate the resources it takes to collect the money. And I oppose to the motion. Let's get on with this. Let's get after it. All we're going to do is put off whatever we're going to decide to do another 30 days, and this has been kicked around. People are upset for what I think, some of them are founded reasons, some of them are not very founded, in my opinion. They're not any different than my friend way down on the left, where he said, we don't have guards at the cemetery, for example. Hey, I know, it, it's tough. We can't have guards that ever, ever open gate. We don't have a guard at City Hall. We may have a button if somebody gets in the building and causes a ruckus. And I'd like to thank the police because they're just down the street, could respond fairly quickly. I heard a, a deal, and this is getting a little bit off the track, but we're talking about security at Rotary today, talking about security at our schools and what little money they spent. The speaker said quarter million dollars to better secure our schools. And it's an addition that has been put on, I understand, all the buildings. If I walk up to that door and I want to get in from the outside, one round from any kind of weapon is going to break it sufficiently to where I can knock the rest of it out, get under the bar. And they have done some work in the schools. Hats off to the school district for stepping up to the plate to protect our kids. Not any of them are mine. I don't have any grandkids, but, Mr. Cole, I know that's where you came from. Whenever you see those people, because you see them, give a big thumbs, thumbs up for me because it was quite a, quite a talk by a guy that I think knows what he's talking about. He's been paid by the federal government. Like to think that he knows something about what he's talking about. So I, I'm, I'm opposed to putting this off. Let's get on with it. It's going to be a new day, a new frontier. You either seize the opportunity and make it work, or you just shake your head and then fold your arms and stomp off and say, ain't nothing can be done to fix this mess. I don't believe that. I really don't believe that. Now's the time to start making those changes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, fellow councillor.
Thank you. There's no one else on the list. I would just like to say a little bit about this. I, I think that, I think the love is in this council to have a zoo. I think that one of the problems is we have a list of how much money is there. We don't have a list of how many people have gone through the park. And I think that's one thing, I think people are looking to get more individuals to go through the zoo, more individuals into the park, more individuals into fishing in the park, and I think that's one of the biggest portions we have there. I can tell you, there's been a lot of things happen that a lot of people didn't like. One of my graduates that graduated with me from high school, when his father died, he gave the zoo $40,000. It's not shown anywhere that I can remember seeing it. And I used to be up there, used to be a plaque because he gave him $40,000. And that was a lot of money, you know, you know, 25 years ago. So, you know, looking at that and, and you look at this, I think when you look at the expenditure levels that we've had, I think people want to, I think the council wants to do things at the zoo. I think we want to fix it. We have a significant number of needs in every avenue we've gone through. This council came up with, when we came into here, we had a budget that was extremely bloated with a lot of money was spent that wasn't there. 14.7 million dollars for one thing, where they said out of 5 million of that, 14.7 came out of the airport fund. Hell, there wasn't 5 million in dollars in the whole airport. They said at one time there was 6 and 1/2 million in there, but that's not true. We had a lot of things. One of the things in the budgets we just, in the year we're in now, you know, our first year, we come in here, what'd we get? We got 2.2 million dollars were put in that budget. It was from hail damage on the airport. And that was put in the budget and spent just as, just as regular money. No one spent any of that money to fix those roofs, what it came, what we paid, what we, where it came from to fix the roofs that were damaged. So where does that 2.2 million come from? It's got to come out of the general fund again. You got 2.2 million there, you sit there and you, you look at the money that was pledged to ascent. Well, that's a little short. You know, you turn around, you look at, at every little thing going up to, you know, 2 and 1/2 million, going up to 2 million, $300,000. you know, 2.5 million, going up to 2,300,000 dollars on the ambulance contract. That's all money has to come from somewhere. We've had a lot of that. You turn around and you look at Ms. Stevens' carousel. That carousel, when you look at it, it needs a lot of work. And if you look how fast it goes, we're probably lucky nobody got thrown off of it. So, you know, and the care of the animals, you know, it's, it needs a lot. And our zoo, what happened to the, we always had Christmas at the railroad, you know, at the zoo. Where did any of the money from Christmas at the zoo go? Where's the good accounting of where the money from Christmas at the zoo went? How much of it went back to replace the tracks on the train? I think there are a lot of things that we have to look at. How many, how much money do we have budgeted for a replacement every year of garbage trucks? Zero. There's no planned maintenance around here in anything we do. That's what's wrong with Roswell. We have no planned maintenance. There wasn't any planned maintenance on Yucca. That's why we had to tear it down. We come in here, okay, what about April of, April of '21? That's when the dehydrator went out at the swimming pool. So let's not fix it for a year. When we were elected and came in in April of '22, nobody even told us it was broken. So now, where are we? We're covered in mold. We have, we have staff members that work there that can't even get health care as employees. They can't even get anybody to go see them, can't get workers comp. And the ones that are on, actually the ones that were temp employees seem to get better care than those who are under the city budget. Something's wrong with what's going on. And, you know, we can blame it on whoever you want. All I'm telling you is we're flat broke. And to find the stuff that's going on, how can we not have at least some garbage truck on a replacement cycle? They don't last forever. Came in here, we had seven grappler trucks, only two of them worked. Then we rolled one of them over, and we did get them up. We've got about six, I think, working now. So there are a lot of issues here that we have to go through. There's nobody here that wants to go at war with the zoo or not have a zoo. To my, to my feelings, I believe that. But what we do want to have is more people in our facilities at reasonable prices. I mean, I don't know, how do you charge a veteran for a police escort? When all those guys, the guys from Vietnam and everything, didn't even get a nice welcome home? And, you know, so we're going to charge them for a veteran. You know, the Vietnam and Korea people, the only ones left. You know, and then, well, you have the Iraq wars and stuff. But, I mean, you know, when you look at it, there are a lot of things we have to change. And we're here to serve the people. That's what happens. We're probably going to have to do something out there to figure out how to pay for the costs we're going to have to do for ambulance care. You know, so there's a lot there. And I, you know, I understand everybody's frustration with this whole thing, but it's not because we don't care. But I do, I do know that La Prino asked for some of their stuff to be placed somewhere else. They didn't want, or at least not say anything about it. Nobody went after telling them that. That was one of their decisions that happened after some of the problems we've had there. So, pardon? Yeah, we can. Well, you know, it's real fun to call the question. I listened to everybody in here, and I didn't say a damn thing to anybody about shutting them up. It's fine if you want to be rude and do that. I'm just going to tell you, I get tired of being accused of things all the time by people in here. And it's, none of it's true, it's just hearsay supposedly. Let's get it out on the open. I'm agreeing. But that's fine. I just would like the same courtesy that I extend to everybody else to be extended to me. I think that's fair. You don't like it? Well, it's guaranteed under the Constitution, in my opinion. So everybody has a right to their opinion, and I have a right to mine. With that, if the clerk would, we have a motion to refer back to the General Services Committee by...
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, Councilor Hildbrand, to clarify, you want to be on the next regularly scheduled council meeting, not the special meeting for the budget later this month?
Yes, go ahead.
This wording is not correct. There's no foundation that says we don't know what the cost is. This resolution is incorrect, in my opinion. When you say that implemented fee led to decreased attendance, you don't know that. Who knows? No one does. And the cost to implement such fees exceeded the gains of system. We believe that, but Councilman Corin has said, yet didn't give proof of that. I don't like to witness resolution, and that's why I want to see this resolution rewritten. Well, that's why we asked for it back to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, or to the next, does it need to be rewritten back in the, in the General Services Committee? Or for maintenance?
Send it back for a re-reading.
As the second to that, I would be amenable to that.
Would that be a General Services or the Finance?
General Services, sir.
Okay, well, that's what the motion that I had here was the motion, would a proper statement of your motion, Mr. Hildbrand, be to refer to General, back to the General Services Committee, and it was seconded by Councilman Perry? Would that be acceptable to both gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Is there any objections to that? Okay. If there was an objection to referring this motion back to the General Services Committee, and that's, that's what I believe that...
That was the motion that was made.
That the Councilman Hildbrand wanted was to go back to the General Services Committee to have them go back through this again and come up with a proper motion where the resolution that was stated over here was not correct, and to go back and refer to that committee and have them take another look at what they're writing.
I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question, though. Should it go to General Services or to Legal to rewrite the order? Should it go to General Services or to Legal? Yeah.
That's fine. I don't care, just, I don't care where it goes back. Just get it corrected. If you want to send it back to Legal, that's fine.
No, I would entertain that as a second as well.
So you're good with Legal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now...
I'm good with taking a bathroom break here in a minute.
Well, somebody charged $2 at the door, and we'll make it. Okay. All right. Is there any objection to having the motion to refer item 23 dash 21 to the Legal Committee? Is there any objection to that?
We just need a roll call. Councilor Corin has requested a roll call.
And you want to, you object? Okay, so we have two objections to going back. Okay, so we have a motion. Okay, okay, we're going to have a roll call vote to refer, I just thought we could do it a little easier, but maybe not. So we have a motion. We have a motion to refer item, resolution number 23 dash 21 to the Legal Committee, back to the Legal Committee. If the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Counselor Sanchez has left the meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Moore, I'm sorry, Counselor Hildbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corin?
No.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
No.
Counselor Halverson?
No.
By a vote of five in the affirmative and three in the negative, the motion is referred back to the Legal Committee.
Foster.
Pardon? Five to three or four to three? Four, three? Excuse me. Okay. Okay, so item 18 is back. We will take a 15-minute break, please, or 10-minute break, probably 10 if we can. You know, I don't know whether to vote now, we have just six people. I have to ask Perry where he is. Well, there's...